Thanks.
So excited to run into you. That's an era.
What was the movie?
I highly recommend it. Carter was not into it.
Prices there.
I imaginary. It was so good. Did you like it? Yeah, I don't know. Great. I wonder to me if it felt like.
From our discussion.
Look at that color.
Apple's apples. Flipping through pages.
Is this whole package for me?
Yeah, so it's it's interesting, existing information. Email that I sent this afternoon, I put that on slides. Kind of brief everyone on how we discuss. Very productive. We got into the nitty gritty.
Yes. Are you an audience member today?
Yeah. Because I say a member of the public now.
What kind of nicknames did you have? Bobby.
Bobby, just between Iowa.
Been charged.
Slide and here on the zoning ordinance.
Thinking I thought people were gonna be away.
Oh, that's. Back in my farmer right now. It's a disaster.
Oh, no. Do you think you guys have a passion for this people once you're done or you don't know?
Well, going back and almost. I only got my stuff there to storage, but yeah. But we'll put sure, yeah, we'll see where the job.
Are you moving on to a year?
Yeah. About August.
Is there every year to be a ten year?
There are. Welcome to the.
Okay. It is 7:00 PM. I'm calling this meeting to work. Have a forum. That looked a form. Should we agree to the agenda as written? Sure. Yes. And do I have a motion to approve the meetings? Probably six. They're good. I would like to. Like to make a motion that we approve these minutes. As they are written here. Of four. Monday, May 6th, 2024. Second. All right, report on relevant actions from town council. Mayor.
I'm here on behalf of Dan tonight. Because Dan is tied up in DC. One of his tour groups. And Javier has handed me a few notes. As far as council things, the big thing has been, of course, budget, getting the budget hammered out. Hopefully, at our work session next week, we will. We'll fine tune it so that we've already called for a public hearing in two weeks and get rid of that thing.
When is the when is the public hearing?
Two weeks from now, which should be what, the 27th?
Seventeen.
Seventeen seventeen, I'm sorry, seventeen. Yeah, that's right, fourteen, three, we get seventeen, right? All right.
I don't know. Don't know anymore.
So you're welcome, welcome to attend. Javier has put a lot of Javier and and a knowledge of votes and put a lot of time and effort into this. This next budget and we're coming up with a little leftover, which is always good and. Take care of the things we need to take care of. It's always a good feeling, too. Couple other things. Javier here been over here, be sending certificate.
For later.
Is that for later? What is what else to.
Batto Festival is the 19th. So we'll have live music. Live music. Vendors.
Scotts and Winters. On the Batto Festival. Well, now it does, but that doesn't call the same day every year.
I didn't realize until last week. Didn't put it two and two together. County ball, county staff will be off.
Just saying. Two teams is a holiday.
Yeah. I have a meeting with Ted Brooks up at Yancy on Saturday and talks about that. Yeah, and keep in mind, too, on the 21st of this month was the 10th anniversary of our Boys and Girls Club. Yes, the festivities started by Sir McCain will be here to speak. There'll be free barbecue and. Tour of the facility and all that sort of thing. So that's on Friday, the 21st. And of course, we've been having events committee meetings for April 4th, July 2nd, so that's falling into place.
Is there, are you open for questions? Is there a litter cleanup plan before July? Yes.
Not sure.
I think scan is is doing it because my husband told me about it. So I don't know.
Been trying to find local boy staff troops that need service hours, but then once he contacted them that, so. We've already been working on that thing.
I know, we dog has offered us the use of the street sweeper a couple days prior to. Whether we can keep it.
I will follow up with the boys scouts.
That's about one over two.
Okay, all right, I'll ask them.
Well, it's traffic and garbage and those cans can get pretty heavy. I think the little guys can do it, so.
Does the Batto Festival, is it being like advertised places? I can see it.
Yeah, we're on our social media and our website. So only border or Meredith Heinz, another person. As a band committee, been making flyers for. Most probably try to share out now society about the one of the organizers. Now society can see if they can also share it on their social media.
Is that everything? Okay, great. Right, so I'm gonna open it up to matters from the public. Do we have anybody who would like to speak? Okay. All right, I'm moving on to new business. So the first item on the agenda is to consider holding an annual meeting on July 1st. For the planning. Annual meeting, can you maybe run down what that looks like?
Goal setting. Goal setting, your schedule for the day for the year, so kind of made up the meetings. We wouldn't just do the first one day. Every annual meeting I have attended in the town council has stuck to the same date, but formally annual meeting was set time.
Okay.
Other governing bodies, even ones I've been on, have changed dates because of.
Sure.
Beyond that, if needed, it's an opportunity also to. To select a chair and vice chair depending on the membership.
Thank you. Is there anything that the town employees would like for that meeting to cover as far as what the planning commission needs to work on once comprehensive plan is done? Since we have a mayor in the room.
Yeah, when you're out, once the comprehensive plan is wrapped up, the next logical step is rebookage or. A zone rewrite, so. I think this is a big opportunity for. I have a collaboration between planning commissioners because it's kind of a dry process compared to the conflict. It's completely based ideas and then you're just gonna rewrite your zone for your comprehensive plan. I could see that taking easily a year, especially even on a case that had a yearly base. But thank you for discussing it during, I might recommend it to the chair discussing it during meetings. And then outside of public meeting. Planning commissioners to meet with a staff member with administrative work on pieces of it would be probably the most prudent way of getting it accomplished. So maybe setting a schedule. How we need to kind of want to approach it. You know, maybe work on it two months and then report back or something that works for the all of us.
What was the town's policy on using chat? What you data will.
For reporting out?
Yeah.
My policy, like Maria and the. I haven't found it as useful as I've ever on majority of things. They got written letters. Maybe there's more than play letters, but thank you whether it works for that. But anything more intricate, it's not there yet.
Were you gonna use that for a word or something? No, I was just saying it would make my life easier getting ready to be zoned. My terms up in two weeks.
Thank you.
So do we agree on July 1st or should we wait here after this?
Those topics on my side. It could be either from my, I think it's important, it was kind of an organizational meeting for itself. So I think it's more important that you guys decide for me personally, right after July 4th. This works feels a lot easier as we're gonna bring up on towards the end of the year.
Oh, I just went on the date of July 1st, sorry. Well, he was just saying that, you know, usually the reference is doing July 4th stuff, so maybe something after that. Oh, you're suggesting.
He was just saying dates. It's not too burdensome. Anything more intricate, maybe you wanna kind of give me an opportunity to dig in.
Okay, so let's.
I want to hold you guys back.
Let's do August 1st. That work everybody or whatever the closest date to a month? If I'm assuming this was for Monday night.
That'd be August 5th.
Okay. Yeah. I can send out an announcement to everybody after meeting suggesting August 5th to see if that works. Are you gonna be able to play in day after work? Oh, no, that's August. It's like, I don't think that's enough time.
Between.
Yeah, let's do that. All right, and then the next item on the agenda is the planning membership. As this Alex just stated, her term that she was filling is up July 30th. Or June, or June 20th. So we're hoping other people are going to step into that hole that. Wouldn't be very qualified. I don't think anybody's put their name in that. I think my skill set is more suited for the scoreboard. But I would come back. Should I, are we putting out a notice for the vacancy or have that already gone out?
Yeah, I've been I've been waiting for the formal and public record. I follow the direction here on that. I can put the word out starting tomorrow. I'll put something on the left side and share CC that all the guys. And to the board, it says. We have always a small.
Okay. Whole business.
Okay.
Plan updates.
Basically, I'd like to. First, there's only text discussion that last year in July, not on May 20th. Then I'd like to talk about the schedule. And I haven't filled out mortgage, I just not a full commission.
I know.
So. This, this is actually a great segue. Talking about the zoning test minutes and the future land use plan. The next step after finishing conflict is really updating the zone. So this is getting down to the nitty gritty. So this will be kind of a glimpse of what some of those considerations might be. So I'll just lead you through these, these items of recapping our discussion from which point it's made. And this and July and stretch by. If I miss, maybe please highlight, I won't explain it. But from the email I sent today, these are just, you know, items, I think it's one through eleven, if I'm not mistaken. And I just kind of added some graphic examples, trying to, you know, draw the reasoning why we're discussing this way. Okay, so. For the handouts, I provided basically three different loose documents. One is the conflict text from 2018. I made some very minor typo updates, most of it, but this is really what was in the previous conflict. Then I have two different plans here. I have the existing zoning map, the current zoning map of the town, this is what I downloaded from the website. And then I have a future land use plan. Which is off the main account, page 31. Okay, so. These two loose maps are are in this staple document, but it's difficult to look at them back and forth, so that's why I put them on. Stay labeled for everyone. Okay, so first item that we really realized is there's a lot of different terminologies between the zoning ordinance that you can find on our website. On website, we put it off. And in the conflict itself, so I've just. Street for a few, you've got different names for residential. On the left here, you've got the current zoning, for instance, downtown residential. But here on future land, you've got town residential. And then the document itself, you've got another term. It's quite confusing. So the first recommendation is we need to review the terminology of new ordinance in the function. Okay, the next item that recommended update is. Really creating a diagram to explain the different types of residential use that are possible in the conflict that are recommended for the ordinance. So I think we came up with this really simple diagram. The rural areas, residential use is the least dense. This is focused on agricultural use and coastal and really on conservation. This is where you get this small town character, you get the roosters. Heading here, making noises. Of course, you can have roosters in other places based on a town ordinance, but this is really where the roosters are gonna like to be the most. Then you have a village residential. Then you have town residential, which is more dense and then this new use that the town does not currently have is mixed use. Okay, so we can talk a little bit more about that later. But this is a proposed diagram, just to kind of make it known as the one because it's really difficult to sit through this. I don't know how many pages of zoning on this we have, about 80 or 100. And really understand it really simply. Okay, so. The 2018 conflict proposed. Changing the terminology of rural areas to rural residential. And once we started talking about all these items, we became very apparent that we have a lot of terms flying around. We might might well not change another one, it's very even more confusing. That's why we're recommending staying with rural areas. Moving on. Okay, so the rural areas text. I believe Mr. Wallace might have drafted this in the 2018 conflict. It added information about cluster homes. But that's really against the idea of rural areas. It's against roosters, it's against agricultural lands, it's against forests. And that might have been something to do with some potential development going on. From our discussion, my recommendation also is to remove any mention of cluster homes in the agricultural or agricultural areas. And we leave that to the village residential or mortgages. Okay, moving on to number five. In the conflict zoning suggestions, it mentions residential R3. And I kept on wondering, where is residential R3? I cannot find this anywhere. So it actually only exists one place in the section set. Just one mention. And in section 10, it referred to traditional downtown residential. So this is again where this terminology gets messed up a little bit confused. So that's why I suggest we strike residential R3 and we stick to the one start. Okay, so this, this is where, number six is where the. The amendments really start to take off, if we could say. The 2018 content proposed changing commercial in the downtown area of the mixed use. It's a lot. And basically. The mixed use might provide some flexibility for development, but it's really important to maintain the residential options for long term affordable housing. So that's where the devil releases the details because in this conflict text, I'll just go to the next page. You've got the existing zoning text here on the left, it's commercial. And you've got what proposed event at that time was. Okay, so. Make sure it would not be about how to rent a strike. Then you add in this text, the bold text. And this is just a short summary, but a lot of these, you know, zoning sections for the town are. They could be five to 10 or 12 pages. So that's where, you know, it's a lot of detailing and the devil really has details. So once the next step is taking this, you know, three or four paragraphs and right, expanding that to five, 10, someone's over pages. So that's why I think our conclusion from that discussion was really the devil's in the details, have to be careful and really have to safeguard. By right, long term occupancy, which is housing. And the intent is not for a short term, you know, temporary occupancy use. Model, very large. Okay, so another takeaway from our discussion was really how confusing. The the text when it's red versus bold, the red was take away, insert strike, and the bold is add. So conclusion is I'll change this to a green underline and red strike through the middle. To make it more clear and understandable. Okay, moving on to number eight. The color coding of the map is also very important. So if you compare the two maps, the loose map that I handed, they're different colors. And even on this future land use plan. The colors in the legend don't even match the map itself. So that's why we have to be careful in the future, make sure everything corresponds. For instance, you see where the tire factory is, is a really dark, dark purple on this future land use plan. But. You know, there is no industrial there, there is no dark purple in the in the legend. There's something that's called transformative mixed use. And also just to mention, there's some other updates that need to be made for the space map anyway. The tire factory is not longer that size, it's been split into two. One part is the tire factory itself, the other is the bridge street housing bell. So that is, that is now. Being used as would be used as residential. Okay, continuing on. So. I just want to take this moment before we jump to the map amendments further, explain what these different maps are for. So on the left is the current zoning map. This is what the town is following at present. It's been fortified. And sources from the town outside, I don't know if it's safe. There are a few minor updates that Wallace left us with, four different lots, I believe, and need to be updated. Historical changes that the planning commission and town council. Latified rather last year and half a year.
So they just did the update of that or?
Yeah, because previously Wallace had to ask the Thomas Chilton County District Commission to update the map. But they don't like to do small lot by small lot, bits and bits, so they want to do one whole update. So then I'll be doing the update.
Okay. I also was curious, you know, we were talking a little bit about the. The SUPs and kind of what happens afterwards and all that kind of thing. If I wanted to organize files, would that be a possibility? I don't know, it's like the. I don't know what kind of ability I have going on that it's bugging me. You know, I would like for us to be able to follow the trigger of that kind of thing on the paper as well, unless we. I mean, I could certainly scan everything if we wanted to keep it electronic.
One option I might want to suggest. One option I might want to suggest is um once uh, you know, we have a updated Excel chart of all the lots that the town has. Maybe uh the James Exchange has been working on that uh long uh visa. And um one is working on uh Alamo County, one is working with the van. And once we combine those those Excel files, we'll have an Excel file of basically every lot in town.
Yeah, that's really great.
The town staff can use that as a basis. And every time there's a planning application, like SCP, so and so's of what they could go in and create a column that says, this is the application as of this day, this is the current status.
Yeah.
That's not a spatial uh sense, but it'd be a lot, it'd be that, I think it makes it more straightforward to play because of Excel, everyone uses Excel.
Sure, and I think that um my thought was just that, you know, we had a couple of questions about whether the SUP, you know, had done this or that, and and it would be nice to be able to see it, but you don't think that's necessary right now?
Well, I think it's a number order of detail, so first is finish the comp plan, the second is update the zoning ordinance, and then the third level would be maybe uh take stock of all the technicality.
Well, I'm available now, so.
So I I mean, another example, um I think we might have briefly talked about this at previous meetings, but those updates to the zoning map, uh Wallace has just left me on a, on a piece of paper. Here here this, I think the the final commission has discussed these, but this is February first, twenty twenty one, so we got these mapping minutes to make now. But if these were all on an Excel file,
Gotcha.
When they sell out, I have a column, uh don't forget to update zoning map in the next.
It's been a couple of rounds.
Yeah, so so um yeah, because like I said, the zoning map will be a GIS, and it'll be a little bit uh difficult because the town also doesn't have a program, I'm gonna be using a a version I have. So yeah, it's it's just, I think that Excel file will be the the easiest way to catch on, in some sense.
Should should the um townsland in Buckingham County be on this map?
Um well, no, yeah, because uh we just don't have no property in Buckingham. Um it wouldn't hurt.
Is there any plan for that? We're gonna make a dog, or we just all drive to Buckingham?
She brought up today, I was kind of thinking, I looked into um when would be the next time we get clear cut December on them, since I got that as a direct request from a council member. That would be three years from now, but that, I think there's been discussions, staff also, about a creativity to have with that property. Of course, if some, it asks we own instead of, if there is something prudent that you feel like in the comprehensive land that could be mentioned about it, the same as we would talk about any park is kind of an asset in town, or as an asset of the town would be a better setting.
I have quite a few things in my mind that would be wrong for that, but for whatever I think. Great, Liz, thanks. Be sure you don't wanna stick.
We've got ten, three years, three years. Because that that could be a potential asset, have one coming in.
But like you said, it would be nice to have it on the map, just kind of as a reminder, and also something that we can, you know, show where it is and what's on.
Yeah, maybe what I suggest on a key plan, um entirely to exactly right, we don't zone uh in Buckingham County, but uh it is an asset. So when we have a key plan showing this is Scottville in the region, here's also the Scottville, that in Buckingham County. Okay, that's a, that's a great idea.
Is there any way to get to the river from that?
No, I think there's actually a parcel around, we're not busting that too far. If I remember, if I remember correctly, it's like thirty six parcels with Yeah.
Okay.
We we did a drive-by a couple of months ago. Okay, so um just jumping back to this. So the the tip of these maps is, you know, we've got the current zoning on the left, that's that's legally uh documented by the town council. We've got the future land use map, it's in the comp plan twenty eighteen, that was the intent, it really shows where the town wants to head, but it's not legally ratified as legislation. It's not an actual zone yet, it's just an intention. Okay, and then what we hope to do, uh is we hope to update that into what we're gonna use in comp plan. So imagine a future land use map and we update it for the mini comp. Okay. So maybe Javier uh found a, found a lot, here's, here's the town of Buckingham County right there. Did you drive by all trees? That's what we saw. Because it ended being thirty two, and ends up being about twenty six, we can tell. So moving on, um the first uh observation you really found from the maps, comparing it side by side, um is the difference in the commercial area. So this is the current zoning on the left. You can see two big areas of red, you've got CNF Motors, you've got Dollar General, so and so. And you've got the Burger Store, um the new gas station, the slip indicator, so and so, okay? So you look in the future land use map, there's a lot more red, okay? This provides a lot more dominant opportunity for those landowners. So for instance, a new gas station um is is here and here, but that whole chain of carso down to Dollar General would become red. This was enacted by the town council. So um, you know, basically, the other issue is the topography. You see some of these lots, uh especially across the street from Dollar General. It's a very, very steep slope here. Here's Dollar General, this is very steep slope, this is the focus commercial. Doesn't really seem like that's the, you know, the structure accessibility for that lot to be turned commercial.
Do you think, I think, does it need to have flat land, and then it goes up?
Well, I think, I think you might be talking about here, it's flat land here, and it goes up here, yeah. But we we really also don't really know what might be uh some of the landowner's thoughts on there. So my recommendation would be just to leave the zoning how it is, we can promote your own how it is, the current uh zoning map.
Is my meto is completely private now, it doesn't run any space? I think they do every, oh. Yeah, because we went to stay up there, the the Astro College, she has a hat, okay, with the policies.
So then this is another um suggested amendment about these three uh lots. Here along East Main Street, the corner slot, one, two, three. Apparently they're downtown residential or town residential. But they're being used by a church, so I think Javier, this is one, something that you were talking about, that could be good for the future. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's an incongruous state that you would do them a favor, some kind of legal change happen, if it was still a business. Uh for example, when I first started here, for example, one people's changed LLC, and they have to write in a quick SCP just to hold on to that uh that use. Everybody seems to be in agreements about it, but uh it's just something you can kind of avoid, because naturally uh those lots are churches, but there is own uh downtown residential right now. So, but I think it would be a common sense just to kind of think that uh for better sure.
The public is hoping to see the graphics, is that possible?
No. So moving on, um this is uh really getting into the question of the different types of residential, especially in all these parts of town. So this is a recommendation in the uh comp plan uh proposing to amend some of this uh rural residential to uh village residential. Rural areas to the village residential. So I'll just show you on this map, um you can see if there's four parcels here in the middle, that's currently rural residential. Also missed that, four parts of the rural residential. Um we've said a lot of things when we're meeting, uh basically, this area you can see here is not served by not served by the Alamo County Service Authority. And that's one of the uh focus areas of the rural areas, because some of it is private wells, a private septic tank, so and so. So that's one of the reasons it's really uh low density and has opportunities for roosters, boles, and so and so. So um you know, with any potential uh development in northeast of the town, um you know, there's always talk of maybe making uh some of this maybe an SCP. But on the flip side, if you leave it very low density, they could just uh develop by rats, right? So it's a double that's for. So that's why I I think that the the town's intention is to uh, you know, densify the used land appropriately, not too too low density, you know. Uh for instance, rural areas, it's a half of volume per acre, so one house per two acres, which is very low density in a, in a, in a town setting. So that's why my my recommendation would be to uh upzone uh those that those four lots in the middle of the town.
Are any of those, I mean, is that um part of the, I'm not gonna be able to remember the name of the developer?
Uh well, there's Main Creek, uh that's the old, the long pier. That's not part of that. The Main Creek is here. And part of Main Creek is not served uh the southeast corner, not served by uh sewer water.
Well, what about the Oak and Cheese Village, is that what it's called? Is that?
So that's, that's large parcel here in the middle there.
Okay.
Yeah. So still, you know, village residential is still uh quite low density, so um a landlord might want to even increase that even further, likely further. So um that's why I think it's a double assorted balancing act, you don't wanna have too low density and destroy and build. So you also don't want to to make, to allow you can see that's way, way beyond anything in the area there. I guess I can phrase that way. So my my recommendation is to change the pink area from rural areas to village residential.
Okay, can I hear you?
Okay, moving on, so uh another item here is a just private parking lot along the road. So it's right uh here. That's where the river rapids sort of parks, right? But uh it's not currently as well, so um any landlord such a bad could go, build a lot of things there, which I have to see uh zoning approval. Typically, there's a fallback zoning, which is uh rural areas and least dense, but there's a lot of leeway there. So my my suggestion would be that the town considered zoning those private parcels lot. And just like the railroad, it's also currently not zoned. But Javier, you can do some research in railroads in Virginia, they are. Yeah. And then if any can occur, at a later point, you would have a fallback zoning. And usually, it's the most restricted, depending on what part we're in here, and so perhaps some people are all in city wouldn't have roads, um for example, but they would fall back to their most restricted zoning.
Okay, those problems that are not currently zoned, that's what would, what would they become if we zoned them?
Um well, they could be some some form of industrial. Currently on the books, there's also public use, uh railroad is a commercial use, so it's also.
Because that was, it was my understanding, we couldn't build comments on the railroad track, is that right?
Um well, the problem, from my understanding, is sort of is the access to that side of the road, so.
But also maybe the.
And the land ownership.
Yeah.
So for instance, like private parking lot, they own the land, and they have a driveway leading to it. So they have access, so hypothetically speaking, they can build their seasonal. In theory, uh yeah. But um for instance, other towns, the railroad uh is taken up, you know, they reduce their numbers of their uh modest track, and the railroad sells off some of the land. Hypothetically speaking, not saying that that would happen here, but what what would a potential uh purchaser of that land want to be? Uh land along the railroad.
What what was that? Well, I mean, I understand all of the pros and cons to that. Probably, it would just be really nice to continue with Bateau down there. It's private property, it's not my business, but I also know that if we were able to do something there, I would love for us to do, have more things there.
So that that really goes back to the connection to the river, I think.
Yeah. Where's the Bateau, those ones, maybe they can make that, you think?
Yeah, I always been told that the the Denby's, the real, real and rapids campgrounds was on property that they would just put the railroad.
Oh, yeah, I knew they did.
Railroad the top.
Oh, I got you.
That was always preventing us from using any of that law there, it's all railroad.
I know, and I I I'm so glad that somebody has good use of that.
They were going to do something on the other side of the campground, can't get there.
Yeah.
Oh, they leased it, it's there.
Yeah.
They have the game. Yeah. So I mean Javier and I, I think it's, two weeks ago, we were looking for that parcel. And we couldn't find it, but this is definitely the the landing right here. And I guess that Jane Hutter there's a boat launch, boat launch, maybe that parking lot's here. So then, taking the mayor's information, it would be prudent to recommend that we have a fallback zoning. Uh and that would be encompassing into the future. It doesn't have to be this railroad example, it could be something else.
Sure.
But we're doing it now, because we know this is a map. Because following that thought process, you know, the the railroad could use it to someone to build a seal, hypothetically speaking. And since it's still owned by the railroad, it's not zoned, but it's still compliant, you know what I mean?
Yeah. Well, you know something, we don't know. No. Then they'll just. But we, we do know about um, you know, the railroad, so, yeah.
So so that, yeah, that's why a fallback zoning uh and examples like this where the railroad is using it for renting it as a semi-public parking lot, it's for private purposes, yeah.
So is it the gravel parking lot that they own and they're leasing? Or is it the um, the big area where we passed the town, passed?
They're losing that part, because the further up that is DWR, well, it's a group of fishers that sat and give DWR permission, and they maintain that public land. So.
Can our, can our maintenance man clean up the litter there on Monday mornings?
We could ask him, yes.
Looking fairly rough recently.
Has been bad because of the fishing. I think he would be amable of that, you know, he's very out. I believe there's a gate right here, or somewhere where the trees are, that it talks about, there's a sign that talks about parking for, for that purpose here. A product, that's the boat, and so of course, there, right there. So it's, it's the uh.
So it's it's the uh fisherman simply leased that D W R, this D W R. Just so to maintain it and promise that the primary use that will always be of fishing. And then down towards it is River Rapids.
So so my recommendation would be that uh. Perhaps because of this relief situation, that all of this river area be zoned. Railroad, and if other uses are proposed by the railroad for leasing purposes, they they have to do a uh apply S G P.
Really? Do they answer the simple?
Well, within the town, town boundary. Just a consideration, if if there's concern about this.
Yeah. I'm leaving it in here. It's fine. Thank you.
Uh this is, this is twenty eighteen. Uh twenty eighteen era. You just can't tell.
Where are these things?
Okay, uh so moving on with me. So that's it, the end of the. The, no, yeah, anything that I failed to mention that I wanted to elaborate on?
No.
So um those are all generally agreeable, and I'll go in and make the text amendments, so that takes care of. Fifteen or so pages of the contract, so that knocks that out. So then moving on to the schedule, um as I emailed this up, I suggest that we uh have another uh. Two member conference, uh sometime over the weekend, twenty fourth of June, Monday through Thursday, uh we can do it via Zoom. If you'd like, uh I'll be out of town, so I'll I'll be there by Zoom, I'll be, I'll be there, you message, and you'd be uh away also to some race. Anyone that would like to volunteer for a two-person Zoom, I guess we all have two members here that will be.
Oh, I'm done. Are you, you're talking about?
Yeah, twenty fourth, twenty fifth, the twenty sixth, the twenty seventh, I'll do all four of those Monday through Thursday. How about I just send an email and then we can.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so then uh also also third uh July, um. We'll still have a kind of conditioning on July first event from Javier. Okay, okay. So so um the intention is we we discuss the transportation plan here. And then uh then we are making updates and we uh discussing, hopefully confirm the transportation plan program. And job first, so that's the last major piece of the contract.
Well, Tommy, I want to know what transportation is, are there viable options?
Well, the the purpose of the transfer plan is to take stock of what's existing, and then also project towards the future, so that's why we discussed the uh. The population projection on the last week, that was the accomplishment that we decided on. So then that's being written in, um I I've actually written it, I was giving fill in the blank for long discussed, and uh. Then uh I think the main thing that we found out was that there's a lot of different travel studies that have been developed over years, but they all are kind of recent. So for instance, the James Exchange sent me a few documents a few months ago, so you know. Include those in our in our OneDrive archive and write them into this transfer plan, so. So uh in the future, people don't have to go searching again for all these systems.
Yeah. I feel like I'm awful.
Yeah. So um that's that's basically the the transfer plan, and then uh for instance, we recorded other aspects from our discussion with B dot. Or Alamo County, wh- which, I mean, a key takeaway for me was Alamo County's uh basically said, if you write us a letter, we will consider your proposal. From whether it be uh intersection improvement, so it's all about putting things on paper and justifying it.
Wouldn't be fun if we talked about playground or something like that, for sure.
The concept of that.
Would you say?
There's the monitor, so we. Want to be careful. And that that that's a different section, but I'll be kind of mobile name.
Uh, I just wanted to comment, so I was reading uh the news that. Pindelwood, which is the new housing development in Charlottesville, they won an award uh for racial equity in action. So as we think about our, and that's just wondering if we have any goals um or comments uh that we can add about. Be more equitable as a community. Moving forward, because of Scottsdale's history, and so uh controversy, controversy.
So um as of right now, in the draft document, um that that starts in the street by the town. So um Ms. Morse uh really focused a lot equally uh both on race and then also because of accessibility. Yes, I lost some support, yeah. So um basically, we could uh build more upon that with the train, yeah, in the context.
As we think of policy and the more people come to the table to discuss development. It's an important concept to consider.
And then another aspect of that is many monuments, so that that's already been able to uh.
I might suggest during discussions during that, while we have a conference there, that that be a um. Guiding principle, as you guys have discussions with Lincoln, and then see what I'll use that as a frame as you keep writing. Or as you, as we keep writing through it, so. Use that meaning for that, I guess, would be the reason that.
Yeah, okay, so I'll uh I'll. For the next uh conference and and meeting after that, I'll focus uh on writing a list of how that is integrated in the contract. And other places where it could be increased more, you can input that kind of that.
Would you might, you wanna fit on the next point?
That's that's the last point, it's uh last slide.
Yeah.
We're in a public meeting. Any other uh questions or comments on the contract?
With you.
Okay. So um in terms of homework, I know Lisa said in the email, um was it open weekend or this morning? About homework, so the the last bit of homework was really looking at the zoning uh text and map, and I think we we kind of wrapped it for the bow today. So now I don't have any uh homework. The next, the next piece of homework will be the transportation plan, we're looking at.
For the next, for the August meeting, nerd?
Yeah. Um so the the goal is to really uh wrap up that transportation plan, but actually that'll be for the July meeting.
Right, but then to read it for the August meeting?
Well, just to pull up and uh so um we're on the Thursday, so.
Okay.
Hopefully uh in July, especially, we we're not able to discuss the transportation plan here. And then on July first, we'll discuss the full type of mission.
And I'm concerned about that email that talks about, you know, talking during the conference. Um with everybody, I mean, I'm glad to come, I just didn't know whether it means that.
Yeah, so uh I I'll uh I'll inquire a little bit, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome, okay. So that's everything for.
You need us to to pick a day, or just after you email us, we can let you know?
Uh well, I I emailed earlier today, actually, but.
I'm sorry.
It's okay, uh I'll first reply to that and ask Lisa or Dan if they'd like to join. And then based on that, then I'll sort of back to.
Okay, we'd love, I mean, I'd love to be there, I just wanted to make sure that everybody was.
Sure.
Okay.
And we can have it back on a few people.
Um, I would definitely say okay to that. Okay, we just pick the the day as much as we want.
Okay.
Just keep it on a Monday.
Okay, can I ask a few questions?
Sure.
What do you have in your word with the county at all? What is their plans for the the northeast corner of James River Road and Valley Street? I mean, this two two corner to that is already commercial.
Are you telling me that?
And you'll you'll say that, you know, the the third corner will be commercial soon. And then. It won't take long for someone to say, well, we need another store on the northeast corner of that. And you know, the other objection I have to this plan is. One side of Valley Street is commercial, but people live on the other side of the street, and that's residential, that is not gonna work. People are gonna put up six foot or ten foot boards because they don't want the lights shining into their house. Has this been consideration? That's my question.
Well, to answer your first question, sir, um, yes, we've had meetings with all three counties, we've had meetings with Alamo County, Alabama. And Buckingham County, but I think you're we're discussing uh what's most relevant to Alamo County. Can we, can we just understand, you're talking about the intersection of uh Valley Street and James River Road here?
Okay, and and further on down Valley Street. How can you have one side of the street commercial with a lot of lights supposedly and parking lots? Supposedly, not, I think I'm not exaggerating. And the other side's residential, and people aren't quiet, and they don't want.
They're actually not proposing to reason.
Excuse me, I can't hear you.
We're we're not proposing to rezone that area as commercial.
Were you not gonna go with it, smack?
No, so we're proposing to leave the zoning the way that it is and not rezone most of it as commercial.
Well, it looks to me like that's the recommended.
It it's already, it's, parts of it are already zoned commercial and the.
Yeah, but you're expanding.
That was the suggestion, that's, I'm sorry, that was the suggestion, and we're recommending to not expand it.
You know, downtown doesn't have as many businesses on in it as James River Road right now. So it's more, that's downtown.
We would love to have more businesses downtown, and we are not proposing to expand this.
What are you talking about? I'm telling you right today, there's more businesses on James River Road than there is downtown.
Sure, and we would love to have more businesses down here, that that is part of the goal.
Oh, I would, I would love that too, but it isn't working.
Right.
You don't have parking space, and any new commercial place is gonna have to have parking. It's just the way it is.
So so just to explain one more time, sir, this is the uh current zoning in the town. In the uptown area, so you can see residential here in yellow, village residential, and then commercial red. But this was the proposal in twenty eighteen in the comprehensive plan, where the town should head. Uh based on our session today, if you want to take a step back, not have so much red, and retain the the ground of red, just there.
Yes, so we would not be expanding, we're not proposing to do what's in the red. It's ref, it was recommended in twenty eighteen, and this board is recommending not implementing that plan.
One other thing, it's what I'd like to have uh Baldwin Avenue put back to a thirty foot right away instead of a fifteen foot, by the way. Did your great planning commission just gave away fifteen foot hollow road? That isn't your problem, that's one of my problems.
Okay. Where is?
Where where is Baldwin Avenue, sir?
It runs right on the little block just.
Runs right through its property. And it borders, it's six hundred feet of it on my property.
Is that where they have all the tractors and everything for sale?
Was traffic circle?
No, travel or sorry. Yeah, below the dollar general there is.
Runs up through High Meadows and comes down on James River Drive, it's never been, never been, it was designated a street, but it's never been used.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's probably hasn't been used since, because that's new business street.
Not since I've been here. I've been here as long as you have.
I've been here longer than you.
I know you have.
And it was a street that had to move uh eastward also, from youths.
Well, that, thank you very much, sir, I think we all appreciate your comment on the commercial lights. That was what you considered.
Now, Mr. Rudy Seale, for his blessing, you know, if he had to put up a six foot solid fence, so the lights went shining, it was vivid.
So before they even came?
And that's what will happen, that's what it's gonna happen on Holly Street, on the east end of Valley Street, at that area.
Okay.
It is, it's just what's gonna happen. It isn't, you could do all the planning you want, but that's what's gonna happen.
He's in Alamo County, he's not in Scottsdale. So he doesn't fall under any jurisdiction that we have. Talking about the guy on the corner with all the property and all those things.
I have property on Valley Street.
Yeah.
Yeah. So and I and I spare a hint of concern.
That's.
Okay, um well, thank you for your comments, and um we are, like, to to recap, we are not planning on. No, no, that we're not planning on expanding that and implementing that twenty eighteen map, so um. We're going to try to keep it as scenic and dark sky friendly as we possibly can, that is very important to this mission. So thank you for your comment, we appreciate it. All right, I motion adjourned. I'm sick of that. Meeting adjourned. Thanks, everybody.